The Pledge Allegiance. Okay, that's the first one. Thank you. We'll have the roll call, please.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor.
Here.
And Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
And I'll note for the record that Councilmember.
Holland.
Is absent.
Yes. Do we have any presentations? None tonight? Public comments. Do we have any public comments? Public comments can be mailed, emailed directly to the council at ci.Atherton.ca.us. And this portion is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. And that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda, except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. Speaker's time is limited to three minutes. Additionally, the public may address the council on any subject listed on the consent and regular agendas. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to make a public comment at this time? Any member? And there are none online. So at this time, we're going to ask the council members if they've had any ex parte communications.
Nope. Not for me.
Nope.
Neither. Do we have any departmental written reports?
You have the reports as part of your agenda packet. Staff answered questions in advance to the meeting on a few of the items, no items of significance that require reporting out, but staff's here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. So we'll have our City Attorney Mona Ibrahimey report out of our closed session.
Thank you. The council did meet in closed session today. There was no public comment in advance of those. We met on two items, initiation of litigation and discussion of existing litigation. The council provided direction to staff on both items.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney Ibrahimey. Next is our consent agenda, items one through six. I'd like to ask if there's any public comments about items one through six. Anyone want to have a question or to poll an item?
Not for me.
I'll bring it back to council and ask if any council member has any questions or comments on items one through six on the consent agenda. If not, I'd like to call for a motion.
It's approved.
It's moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any comments?
A roll call.
And let's do a roll call, please, for that.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor Hawkins.
Yes.
So the consent agenda has been moved and approved. And then we'll go on to our public hearing. We have actually, I think, four public hearing items. And so we will introduce them by title only. My other notes here, excuse me. So the first one is item number seven, which is introduction by title only and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter eight point two eight of the Atherton Municipal Code to make it consistent with state law. The City Council, yeah.
I will handle this one. Thank you, Vice Mayor Lewis. Chapter two point eight point twenty-eight of the Towns Municipal Code addresses swimming pool fences. And the basic requirement presently is that swimming pools with an excess of twenty-four inches must have an enclosure that is at least six feet high. The issue with the existing ordinance is that it was adopted in nineteen eighty-five and has not been updated since. However, state law specifically, the Swimming Pool Safety Act, has been updated numerous times since the town's adoption of its code. Therefore, the amendment before you today is to bring our existing ordinance in line with state law because it seems to be changing quite a bit and it's unpredictable when that happens. Rather than copying and pasting the state law requirements into our ordinance, we have simply explained that we are requiring what state law requires for both private pools and public pools. The private pools have a number of options to bring their swimming pool into compliance to ensure that they're, they are safe. And every private property owner with a swimming pool must include at least two drowning prevention safety features that are required by statute. These can range from height, a five-foot-high enclosure around the pool, removable mesh fencing, safety pool cover, exit alarms on the home's doors, and a self-latching device on the home doors that provide direct access to the pool along with an alarm that sounds if there's an accidental entrance into the pool. The property owner can select which of those two makes the most sense for their home. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, does any member of the council have a question for City Attorney?
No.
On this item. Mayor Hawkins, do you have a question? No? Okay. We'll take public comments on this item. Any member of the public want to make a comment? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and return to council for discussion. Any discussion on this item?
Move acceptance.
We have a motion in a second to approve the introducing, introducing of this public hearing.
Without reading.
Without reading?
I'll second it.
Okay, then we'll call for a motion, call for the vote.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. And so I'll close public hearing on this item and open another public hearing on item number eight, which is to adopt a resolution number twenty-four approving an amended town master fee schedule. I think all of our council members has an updated master fee schedule in front of them now. So are you? Yes, okay, Robert.
Before I turn it over to Robert, just for clarity there, there was a number of during our one-on-one comments, a number of format type comments related to making things consistent in it. That's all that the update is. That was before you. There's also copies back here at the back as well from the public. It's just a clean version. The highlighted sections in it, sorry, I'm just doing some of the thunder, Robert. The highlighted sections in it, JADUs, ADUs, et cetera, those items in what color? What your color plan too?
They're yellow.
Orange.
Orange.
Orange are the ones that had council direction to modify and change or.
Okay, so Robert, are you going to?
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Council members of the public. Before you is a staff resolution approving an amended town master fee schedule. Conduct a public hearing to review and discuss discussion of the town user master fee schedule and appropriate adopted resolution approving an amended master fee schedule. As council is aware, the UZV study was performed last year as we reviewed the, at the December sixth City Council Study Session.
A little audio problem here, so just. Well, we can hear each other, but.
The UZV study was performed last year, was reviewed at the December sixth Study Session. The council reviewed and provided directions for specific adjustments to the town master fee schedule. At our January seventeenth council meeting, staff providing suggestions for policy-driven fee adjustments derived from this December sixth Study Session. During the meeting, the council provided direction to set specific fees. Those specific fees, as George mentioned, are listed in the staff report and are highlighted in the master fee schedule as orange. Also, council has suggested that the town master fee schedule be provided to the Builders Roundtable for input. Staff provided the fee study and discussed the council's specific policy updates to the fee schedule at the Builders Roundtable at their February, February fifth meeting. Staff also presented an updated and simplified table of the master fee schedule, which was provided in the staff report. There were also, there were several contract groups present for discussion. Your sentiments were provided, that are, that are provided in the staff report tonight. The attached master fee schedule includes all fees charged by the town. There is a newly updated format master fee schedule, as George mentioned. It's provided for the council tonight. There are no substantial changes. One clarity for presentation as discussed. This concludes my staff report, the presentation. Open for questions.
Thank you, Robert. I'll bring it back to council for any questions for staff on this item.
No.
I'll open it to the public. Any member of the public have any questions regarding this updated master fee schedule that's being presented? Okay.
Questions, comments?
Comments, right, comments, sorry. Questions, comments? Yes, Fred, Ken Fredericks.
First question, if I ask a question, can I get an answer or you guys want to answer the question? Is that correct? I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, actually, it's supposed to be comments only.
No, no, I didn't. I'm not arguing, I'm just saying. A couple of quick things. One, a question that the residents will want to know is what will the, what's the impact of the higher fees this year versus last? That is, had we kept the old fees, what would the income to the, to the town be? And if we raise, as you're raising them, what will the income be? So is it going to be a million dollars extra? Two hundred thousand? What's, what's that number? Second of all, what the residents would like to know is what, what were they last year? What were they, what's the, what is it now this year? Because there's nothing, I'm missing something. I don't see last year's in here. I see the new ones.
So, may I? Yeah.
Didn't mean that.
I'll make a, I'll make a comment after you.
Okay. Because the residents would like to know what it was versus what it is.
Yeah.
Because this would be sick or shock. Most of the residents have no idea this is going on. Now, they should, but they don't. So they have, they have no idea this is going to happen. And when they start seeing some of these, they'll be very pleased with the work you did with ADUs, obviously. But some of the others will shock them. And before that happens, perhaps you should get ahead of it, explain why and what it is, because it's going to be shock to them. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up those points. And I would like to ask the City Manager to help me opine on this because I do believe that we had several study sessions about this very thing. And it was presented by the consultant who did a very in-depth analysis of all of our fees throughout the town. And it's my recollection that these fees have not been adjusted for thirteen years?
Ten.
Ten years, okay. So it's ten years ago in twenty thirteen. So it's been a long time. So any other additional comments?
Yes, the consultant's report that you're talking about was also talking loud, so is that going in my mic here? Sorry. You turned down the volume on it just a little bit, Anthony. The prior council meetings where this was heard, the consultant's report included a comparison of current fees, listed those out to propose new fees as well as the subsidization that was going on as a result of those lower fees. In other words, the difference that Ken is talking about between what's being collected before versus what's being collected with the proposed new fees and the new costs that are associated with that. So it's not that the town is making additional money. The town is actually bringing its fees up to pay its actual costs.
So just to follow up on what you're saying is that the, this has been disclosed and brought into the public arena here for discussion, analyzation. And all of this information is on our website through all of our council meetings and our study session meetings and the charts and everything is all there for any person to go and take a look at. So I appreciate your comments. Any other member of the public would like to make a comment on this? No one online? So I'll close the public hearing and I'll return it to council for discussion and direction and action. Councilmember Widmer.
Yeah, just a comment with relationship to what the question was. Over ten years, labor costs have gone up. Over the last ten years, the cost of this building has been added and the beautiful sites that we have and all of that was not generated in the cost, in the fees that we were getting. So it was appropriate that we raise the fees. Most communities raise their fees every other year. We're proposing to raise ours in this case every three years, but have a COLA in there. I think this is fair and equitable. I think all of us had some differences with some of the numbers, but at the end of the day, the consensus was to go forward with what was here. That was fair and reasonable. And in the last meeting, as was mentioned by Robert, we asked the town to bring that forward since a lot of the cost is in the planning area to bring forward to the building community. And so they could opine on what they thought. And they responded the same way. You guys are the lowest in the area. You haven't updated your fees in ten years. They had no problem with it. So I suggest that we continue to move forward with approving this.
Okay, did you want to make a comment, Councilmember DeGolia?
As a part of this master fee schedule adoption, is it proposed that there be any annual adjustment going forward?
We're talking about a COLA.
We will bring it back at our, during the budget process and we will bring it back. It, that was recommended it would be adjusted by CPI every year. And so we'll bring it, instead of putting the escalator within the resolution, staff recommends that we bring it back with the budget process.
Each year.
Each year.
So. I think that's, I think that's reasonable. Mayor Hawkinsman, William, do you have any comments on this? Okay, thank you. So I'll call for a motion to approve this.
I approve the, the adjustment of the, the fee schedule.
Okay, that's moved by Councilmember Widmer. Any second?
Second.
Okay. I got my, I got my first and seconds, you know, we're going here. So all in favor?
I think you need a roll call.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
So that motion passes and we will go on to item number nine of the public hearing to discuss and consider an amendment of the Heritage Tree Preservation Standards and Specifications to align tree protection zones, the TPZ standards in the R1A and R1B zoning districts. And we have our planner Brittany Bendix. Would you like to make a comment about this? So I'll open the public hearing for this and ask Brittany.
Good evening, council members. Brittany Bendix, Town Planner, and I am here today with the Town Arborist Sally Benz to answer any questions. As you may recall, at a meeting in November of twenty twenty-three, the council considered amendments to the town's Heritage Tree Ordinance and Guidelines. During that discussion, there was discussion, sorry, during that discussion, there was question raised over whether or not the R1A and R1B standards should be in alignment. This was something then that I indicated would need to be publicly noticed as it, it would impact a number of property owners, whichever the alignment could, could possibly go. So we did that in preparation for both this meeting and one with the Planning Commission in January. At the Planning Commission meeting in January, they did consider the potential of aligning R1A standards with R1B and R1B with R1A. And in the end, they took staff's recommendation, which is to maintain the status quo. If you have any questions relative to the staff report, both Sally and I are available.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll bring it back to council for any questions for staff. Yes, Mr. Widmer.
Yeah. So, you know, I personally think the two areas should be the same. George has discussed with me why the Planning Commission, and he, he believes they should be separate because of the ability to build on elsewhere in the community or in the, on the property. The TPZ, it seems to me, would be different for different types of trees. And as such, I would hope that maybe in a future amendment, there should be some discussion about, you know, a redwood tree primarily goes down, does have some stuff that goes out to the side, oak trees spread out and they're shallor. And so perhaps the TPZ should be refined to specific trees that we're really trying to protect. And the tree that we're trying to protect is the valley oak and coast oaks. And as opposed to bay laurels and things like that, which are essentially overgrown bushes and essentially deemed to be junk trees. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
But I'd like to move forward with what we've got that gives us a start.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Widmer. Anyone else make a comment?
Is it comments or questions?
Questions.
It's your questions of staff.
Questions of staff.
But he had comments.
I guess I have a question, which is, right now, the, the reason this whole thing came up is in the course of some review, probably of housing-related matters over the last six months, it became clear that if you lived on a property that was R1A, which is basically an Atherton acre or larger, that you needed to protect your trees at ten times their diameter. And if you lived on a smaller property, you only needed to protect your trees at six times their diameter. And that made no sense because the trees need to be protected at what's healthy for the trees, not based on what the size of your property is. And, and as in the course of a great deal of assessment, it kind of came back and I think the Planning Commission stated that that difference is irrelevant because ten X the diameter of the tree would make it impossible to actually do very much development on those smaller lots. But it just doesn't compute for me. So because the trees are going, what, what, what's the right protection for the trees? It doesn't matter what size your lot is. So my question for staff, and, and there are comments behind it, but that my question for staff is what is the right protection for an oak tree? I mean, really?
I'm Sally Benz, the Town Arborist. So like Widmer was saying before, every tree would have a different TPZ zone based on construction impacts. So not necessarily, not necessarily the species, but on how well the species can take construction. So there is a number that you can calculate for every species of tree. But it's, you would also take into account the health of that specific tree, the age of that specific tree, and then you can get the TPZ zone. So this is something we were doing before we changed the ordinance. But there's thirty-plus trees on every site, so we would need to calculate that and the architects would have to calculate that. And that seems pretty confusing. So to get to what your, your question is, is that it would be best if we had ten X for all species because some species need twelve X and some species can tolerate eight X. But we came to, we came to an average of ten X. So I think it would be best if we could do ten X. However, because we want development on R1Bs, we lowered it down to six X, which is the critical root zone. Which is not the ideal TPZ zone. But there's less construction on R1Bs.
Okay, so just to follow up to my question. So I think you answered my question in, in two pieces. One is there are different TPZs that are relevant to different species of trees. And our definition of heritage tree is based on the size of the trunk and covers almost all species, except six. So that's one answer is it depends on the species of the tree. And the second is there's always going to be some variability based on the particular tree. And, and the latter you can't avoid. The former, we might be able to address more intelligently than we have, and that we'll get into comments. But my question is, well, just looking at valley oaks and live oaks, what, what is the TPZ that you think is right?
If you were just, if we were talking about a average-sized valley oak in, in Atherton, not the oldest of oldest, but an average one, the actual calculation is twelve X for a valley oak. It's lower for a coast live oak. So we're capturing.
And what is it for a coast live oak?
It's between eight and ten times.
Okay.
Because they, they're, they're better enabled to take construction impact. So so we have a lot of valley oaks, we have a lot of coast live oaks, and we have a lot of redwoods. Those are basically the three main species we have. And then we have a lot of cedars, which don't take construction impacts as well. Sycamores also don't. So we were trying to come to a compromise number where you're still protecting the tree. But we're not capturing all of the trees, but at least at ten times, it's better than, than a lower TPZ number.
So I have a question for staff. Do you know what the policies are in other jurisdictions like Menlo Park?
So in regards to TPZ, it's mostly ten times. So I, I've looked at a lot of different cities. It's ten, it's either ten times or sometimes the Hillsborough one is the drip line or five feet past the drip line, which I can't really tell you what that TPZ would be. But it's on average, it's around ten times TPZ.
Okay.
But also different cities have different heritage tree standards. So ours is fifteen inches diameter. But other cities, they break it down into different species and say which, which diameter for these species. And in a lot of places, they've lowered the diameter for oaks down to eleven inches diameter for a protective tree. So I don't want to open up any kind of worms.
Right, okay, yeah, thank you. Mayor Hawkinsman, William, do you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I'd like to understand a little bit more why we didn't take the species approach. Is it, is there a reason why we never went the next step to do the species?
I think because of the sites have a lot of trees, it would be a burden on the applicant and on staff. However, that was something we were doing in the past.
It seems reasonable that they would be broken down by species. I mean, Councilmember Widmer started out saying that, you know, all trees aren't made equal and they have to equal size and equal girth and drip line and everything else. So I, I understand that this has been presented to the Planning Commission and they've opined on it and studied it. And they've decided to leave it as is at this point.
Well, I think we need to go forward with it as it is and it can be refined.
And then we can study it some more at this point. Councilmember DeGolia, do you have a opinion on that? We're gonna.
I have, I have a bunch of opinions.
Okay.
Are we in?
No, because we're going to have public comments next. Thank you, Sally. All right. So we'll close questions from the council and ask any public if they have any question, comments, comments about this item of the TPZ zone. No, we're, we're on the TP. Yes, we are. I'm sorry. We're on the TPZ. So, yes, I'm. I'm, I'm sorry, Carol. Okay, let's finish this item here, please. So Betsy, yes, it's your turn for public comment at this point.
I want to say that I support Sally's recommendation. I think the, the ordinance is working well. I think people with smaller lots understand what they have and realize that we are making accommodations for them. I'm concerned that if you reduce the TPC size, that we will lose more heritage trees. These trees, they're big. They look invincible, but they're not invincible and they can be really damaged when the roots are encroached. So I want to do what we can to protect them. They are fooling our environment. They They are storing water in the soil. They are giving benefits to the wildlife. They are an enormous enhancement to our city. So I want to help take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to make a comment on this item? Seeing none and no one on the Zoom, Anthony, that you can see. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and I'll turn to Councilmember DeGoya.
Okay, so I have a problem, which is uh and and it's slightly related to the fee schedule that we just approved. Um, and my problem, my problem here is that we define a heritage tree as any tree that is greater than 45 inches in diameter at a certain measurement point above the ground, irregardless of what species that tree is, except for six species. And in our definition of a heritage tree, we identify seven species that are undesirable species in Atherton. Uh, and I I don't need to list those, except I will list the seventh, which is a Monterey pine. Uh, those are that, those are undesirable, those seven. And then in the definition of heritage trees, we say heritage trees are any tree that's greater than 45 inches at this measurement point. Um, other than six trees that are undesirable trees. And for some reason, we don't exclude Monterey pines. Uh, I don't know why, but we don't. But my problem with that is that what that uh, and I'm looking at this from a resident's perspective, is that what that definition does is it forces any resident that has a species of a tree, like a bay tree or a Monterey pine or a monkey tree or some other weird tree that we don't really need to protect, it forces them to have to apply to either the Town Arborist or to the Planning Commission if they're going to seek to remove that tree. And or or they could choose to build an ADU. And then they get to remove the tree because you can remove any tree, including any oak, no matter how what size it is, if you're going to build an ADU. So I just find that horrible. That to me, that is so unfriendly to residents and not intelligent because there are a large numbers of trees that we don't really care about protecting just because they're law, they're more than 45 inches. They may be a species of tree that we really don't care about protecting. I mean, we can enjoy them and the property owners can enjoy them, but people should have some rights to do some things with their private property other than those things we absolutely want to protect. And I hundred percent believe we should protect every oak that we possibly can. And and I find it horrendous that the ADU ordinance allows people to just build an ADU and and remove a terrific old growth oak. Um, now, I'm not proposing to change that tonight because honestly, I don't really know how to change it. I I I'm sensitive to Sally's comment. There's a lot of species of trees. And how do you decide what to exclude? There must be a way to do it. I'm sure other communities have dealt with it. Uh, it's just, I think our definition is too broad. And what's it force? It forces our residents to have to apply to either our Town Arborist or to the Planning Commission to remove those trees. And in the last year, there were 30 applications to the Town Arborist uh to remove uh heritage trees. And there were nine applications that went to the Planning Commission. 100% of those applications were approved. And at our new cost structure, those applications would cost $27,000 in total for the applications to our Town Arborist and $27,000 for the nine applications to the Planning Commission. And and some of those trees may be bay, you know, a bay tree or or even a laurel tree. I I I protect my property with screening and I have laurel trees. And these trees are 25 years old or 30 years old. And they may well be close to the point of being defined as a heritage tree. But like Bill said, they're just overgrown shrubs. Now, I like them. I'm not going to take them out. They give me screening and they are 30 feet high. But if I needed to take one out, I should be able to take one out and not have to apply at hundreds of dollars of cost to do that. So I just have a, I so I guess my recommendation here is that we send this back uh to relook at this definition of the heritage tree. Uh, I mean, I I could agree to approve the, what we've got in front of us because it's a definition heritage tree and then go change the definition of the heritage tree. Um, but I, I mean, that's open for council discussion.
Just for clarity, there's actually nothing you need to approve tonight?
This is just a-
Oh, there's nothing to approve?
Because you're maintaining current policy?
Our first reading.
I see.
Yeah.
But direction would be important.
Yeah.
I see.
I think the direction that Rickus suggested is correct, you know, in line with my comments that not all trees need to be protected at the same level and some trees don't need to be protected at all, so.
Any uh, Mayor Hawkins, Manuel, and do you want to opine on this comments?
No, I agree with what was being said. I like these, looking at the species and having that definition happen, whether that, but obviously that can't happen tonight, so.
Right, yes.
To the future as well.
A lot more. Um, so I I'll opine and make a comment that it is um, a a complex issue because there are so many different species of trees. I think initially the the um, the concept is that any large tree that has grown for years in someone's yard needs that respect of of to be considered um, quote unquote heritage and not just be willy-nilly chopped down at a whim. Um, or uh because of a construction project, damaged to the point where they're going to get sick and die. So I think that was the initial thought and, you know, concept around trying to create these uh TPZ zones around the large trees. Obviously, our oaks are of vital importance to us. We love our oaks, but more oaks are falling all the time with the ground saturation and the high winds. Because they are so big, they're these beautiful gentle giants that, you know, are hundreds of years old and, you know, they're, yeah, a lot of them are native and they're kind of in roadways and sideways where they haven't had a lot of, you know, ground around them to to thrive. So um, this is, we'll close the public hearing uh on this, the first reading, and we'll send it back to uh planning and the um, uh, Planning Department, Planning Commission for further review. Is that right?
Direction, investigate species issues, any potential amendments to the heritage tree definition that might assist in focusing in on what trees are important and what trees may not be as important.
Okay.
Yeah, remove species from needing to get a fee or go into the Planning Commission to remove if they don't, they're not desirable trees.
Well, that that's that's-
I think what was before us was to approve what currently exists. There there wasn't a recommended change. So there was no actual action unless we wanted to not accept what exists. So if we're just moving on, except and and what we've had recommended from some public comment uh and from the Town Arborists is to go with what exists. And and if we just go with what exists, but say we want to take a hard look at the definition of the heritage tree, that is a separate uh look at our heritage tree ordinance. Um, and trying to address it based on some of the comments we've had at the council.
I think the direction is because we have to have an ordinance in place and our TPZ is currently in place. But our direction is to go back and have staff study at our Planning Department and then take it back to the Planning Commission for reevaluation and further study.
Right.
Okay, I'm closing this item. We have one more item for public hearing. It is uh item number 10 um in your packet. It's the first reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace Atherton Municipal Code, Chapter 17.52, quote, accessory dwelling units, end quote, and to amend Chapter 17.36, Public Facilities and Schools Districts, the PFS Zone, and Chapter 17.60, Definitions. And I'll hand it over to the staff for staff report. Brittany?
Uh, Brittany Bendix, Town Planner, once again. So the ADU discussion has been ongoing for most of 2023 with the most recent hearings in November and January, where we've discussed extensive changes to the town's ADU ordinance, really due to state law. Uh, the most recent hearings have focused on areas where the town has the most flexibility for local control. And at this point, we've we've narrowed it down to two remaining issues. The bonus ADU program, which the ordinance before you tonight reflects changes related to affordability limits, rental durations, and setback eligibility for that program. And then the second issue is screening for two types of ADUs, as I've broken up in the new language. One would be the ADUs located above detached garages and the other is, would apply to ADUs that are within the town setbacks for accessory structures and buildings. So that includes or that generally reflects the changes that are in the ordinance tonight. And with that, I will turn it back to you for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Uh, we'll take council questions on this item. Who wants to go first?
Just a question, yeah, I I have a question. Uh, so uh as we discussed, the staff report stated that after the last council discussion, the council decided to revise the bonus ADU uh ordinance to require uh the uh ADU owner to rent that ADU. And um, and the language specifically said uh in in the uh ordinance draft that the bonus ADU must be rented for a period of nine years or longer. And and I commented that um, I didn't think the council said anyone is required to rent anything. Uh, but we said that for a bonus ADU would have a um, uh, a deed restriction saying that if it were to be rented, it would have to be rented at a certain affordable rate. And we gave a couple frameworks, which I think were correctly stated. Uh, but that's not saying that those ADUs have to be rented. That's saying that if those ADUs are rented, they have to rent in in order to comply with that deed restriction. And and so my question is, in the proposed language that is before us tonight, is that's, has that been fixed?
Uh, what was suggested is we could amend subsection B, where it says the bonus ADU must be rented for a period of nine months or longer. To read, the bonus ADU cannot be rented for less than nine months.
Okay, yeah, I think in the ordinance language, that's the only thing that needed to change.
Can I just clarify what I thought I heard you say? I heard you, I heard you say nine years and-
Oh, I meant nine months, sorry.
Okay, I just want to make sure-
I may have said nine years, but I meant nine months.
Yeah, we may not live nine.
Yeah, but I think the critical thing is just the perspective on the direction, which is I I don't think the council directed that these units have to be rented. It just was that if these units are rented, they have to be rented at the affordable rates provided for in the deed restriction.
And for a minimum of nine months.
And and for a minimum of nine months, correct.
Yeah, because I think that our objective here would, well, I'm not asking a question, but that it would not be a revolving door, you know. It it nine months actually is, I guess, a school year, right? So that, I think that was what-
But 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 the point here is that a homeowner would, under this bonus ADU program, have a right to build an ADU, have it deed restricted, and then choose not to rent it. That that is, I mean, why would, well, we could debate whether somebody would be intelligent to do that or not, but but it would, I mean, control is still with the home.
Okay, are you finished?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Widmer.
Yeah, uh, on the screening component, I I know that we mentioned that it has to have screening, adequate screening. I think that we should be more definitive. So if, you know, we're requiring an eight-foot fence or eight-foot high screening. So if somebody's going to put in screening, like in today's world, people can put in screening, but they can put in, you know, a a three-inch-high shrub and say, well, in five years, it's going to get there. So that that's not going to fly with an 18-foot-high ADU with windows at the top, even though this windows are going to be per our ordinance. I I think that we need to have some clarity uh on the screening to just cover it appropriately like we had discussed in the meeting. That's my only comment, thank you. And question, because I didn't see it written properly.
I'm going to bring it back to Councilmember DeGoya before bringing uh Mayor Hawkins and Walian in. You have a question?
Yeah, a question. So um, in in the screening language, the the proposed language says uh, the required fence shall be solid opaque, extend along the entire front side or rear property line that is adjacent to the reduced setback area or uh and extend along the entire front side or rear property line that is adjacent to the ADU. And my question is, just clarification, that, does that mean that is adjacent to for the length of the ADU or the length of that, it's probably the ADU that is in that setback area, that um, that's the the portion of that fence that needs to be screened?
The prior direction from council was to be the full property line.
All 200 yards.
So if the ADU is located with a reduced setback in the side yard area, then the higher, the taller fence is required for the full side yard property line.
Why, I think that's-
That was my question.
Yeah.
That frankly wasn't clear from the language to me.
Okay, so I'll take note of that. Um, Mayor Hawkins, Manuelian?
Yeah, the question I had was kind of following up a little bit on what Bill was saying. Do we have a height limit on things that are planted? Or is it, in the past, they were talking about the gallon size of the container. But uh was, we talked about whether or not to include an actual height limit. Did any of that get included? And how do we define some that's adequately screened? Do we have line of sight as verbiage that's in there that defines what adequate existing screening would be?
So the adequate existing screening is at least eight feet tall and opaque. That's where we left it with the solid and the eight-foot-tall reference instead of in line of sight.
Not at a future time, but at the time-
At the time as installed.
As existing.
Right, and so what that means is that you really do need to build a fence of some sort, and whether it's a wooden fence or um a stucco fence. And then you can plant screening, you know, uh to soften that fence. But um, or if you wanted to plant eight-foot-tall English laurel shrubs, right? You've got to do that day one. You can't plant a three-foot English laurel and then expect it to grow over five years.
Although if there are 10-foot-taller English laurel shrubs already there.
Yeah, right, right. If you already have pitasphorums or, you know, English laurels already there, then you don't have to add any. But I think the ordinance, the language is pretty clear. Yeah, Widmer, I mean, Councilmember Widmer, right? To answer your question.
I just wanted it to be clarified a little bit more, that's all.
Okay, all right. Any other questions before we close that part? And we take um, public comment, if any, about this from public? Any member of the public want to uh make a comment on item number 10?
Sorry to be late tonight. I feel like hell, have a horrible cold, but I decided to get up here anyway.
Okay, I'm going to put on my mask.
Excuse me, but you all really don't give a damn what the public thinks. The public does not want bonus ADUs on two-plus acres. I don't care if they're deed restricted. We don't want to have multiple buildings all through our backyards. I have four two-acre parcels around- I have four two-acre parcels around me, and I can tell you, two acres is not a lot. So you've already made your decision on stuff. So there's no point in the public commenting on anything, frankly. But they don't want bonus ADUs. I'll comment on that. The rest of it, who cares? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public need to make a comment on this item, please? Uh, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and we'll return it to the council for discussion, direction, and action. Any member of the council want to make a comment on this item number ten?
If people don't want to install a bonus ADU, they're not compelled to do so.
Okay.
I mean, I prefer not to see a bunch of ADUs on, on properties too, which I, I've brought up several times, but, you know, that's been an issue that the, the council has positioned itself to move forward on, uh, from the get-go. So, you know, it is what it is. But, you know, I don't want to see, you can have a JADU, you can have an attached ADU, you can have an ADU plus a primary. That's four residents. And then you have a, a, a bonus ADU, bingo, that's five. And, you know, it's going to turn into just a big, uh, rental property there. So I, I brought that up several times in the meetings. I don't necessarily, I hope not to see that. But, uh, you know, I think it's an important part of our HCD approval process. They want to see it. Um, hopefully, if it's going to be obtrusive, then the neighbors, uh, or the property owners will not do it. However, uh, they will have the right to do it if they have that large piece of property. So Carol, I agree with you. But, um, it's been there forever.
Any other comments?
Uh, well, I, I, I'll support what Councilmember Widmer just said. I, I, I think the real reason that we're doing this is because HCD has precedent, and this is something that they seem to be, um, enamored with. And we, we, we need to get approved by them with, and give up as little of our town's character as we can. And, um, and if we don't, they'll take over our zoning. We know that. They've threatened that with other cities. And while, you know, there's this time period that, that we have the benefit of waiting on and watching what happens in Southern California, that's moving on. And, um, and I believe that ultimately they will take over city zoning. Uh, and that's what I consider the threat. If they take over our zoning, there's going to be multifamily districts all over Atherton.
Yep.
Uh, and this issue's going to have been a non-issue. Uh, I'm not frankly, and I could be dead wrong about this, but I'm not worried about having all these rental communities in Atherton. But we, we have a problem. There's plenty of ADUs that exist in Atherton right now. And almost all of them don't get rented. So our challenge is to find those that do get rented and be able to catalog those and show HCD that in fact, we're meeting the housing requirement that they forced on us with RENA. Uh, and that's a real serious challenge. We're way away from being able to meet that challenge. So I'm not really worried about having all these little units rented. We're not San Diego. And I don't think that's going to happen here. I could be wrong, but that's what I think.
I'll ask Council, uh, Mayor, uh, Hawkins, Man William, do you have any comments on this? No? Okay. Well, I will, um, also opine, uh, with, along with my other council members here, that we don't want to be doing this. We don't want to even be talking about ADUs, bonus ADUs, you know, uh, multifamily on our lots. Um, the, uh, concept of having at least a two or more acre property is that it's a large property. And the, what's happening now, if you drive around, uh, there are massive, I mean, I'm saying massive homes being built to what I almost think is lot line to lot line on, in, in the R1A district. And the consolidation of, uh, uh, parcels to building compounds. And so it's like, you know, small industrial areas in our town, which is not what the character of the town was or used to be. And when I first got on council in two thousand and eight, the building boom was just beginning. And everybody was just really, really against all that. But then they slowly saw how revenue increased with the development of these older nineteen fifty-style homes, uh, with the new, uh, property tax, uh, basis and stuff. So it's, it's a thing that we have to deal with now. And I don't think adding, uh, an ADU, a second ADU on a property of two or more acres is going to move the needle one way or another. I think there are so many outbuildings now being built on these large properties. There's pool houses, there's sheds, there's, um, accessory, uh, units, uh, uh, ancillary buildings. So I, I really don't think that we have to worry a lot about it. It's really up to the property owners. And I think that, um, what we have to worry about though is, you know, the state mandating that we have to do this, and they will take away our zoning, uh, rights. And, um, so I would like to, if there's no other council comments on this, uh, recommend that the council waive the first reading and introduce this ordinance, uh, the ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter seventeen point five two and amend, uh, Chapter seventeen point three six.
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I'll second that. Um, roll call, please, Anthony.
Councilmember Degoya?
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so I'm, uh, closing the public hearings and going on to the regular agenda. And we will go to item eleven, item eleven, the regular agenda, which is.
Are you going to reopen the, the fee schedule at, at the request of?
Uh.
Carol?
I.
What was your?
Carol has comments on that item, and there is the ability to give public comment at the end of the meeting.
Yes, that's what I was hoping to do.
All right, okay, no problem.
Widmer.
Thanks.
We can just go ahead and just finish this up here a little bit. Thank you. Um, item number eleven, which is to approve project plans and authorize bid solicitation for the project for the Fair Oaks Lane, Loiden Drive, Dinkelspiel Station Lane intersection. Now, that is a mouthful, and that is very complicated. This is a very, very complicated intersection. And I'm so happy, so happy to have Robert Avadi, our Public Works Director, to take this on and help us solve this problem.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight, we have a request for you to approve, uh, the plans for the intersection improvements at Fair Oaks, Loiden, and Station Lane. See, I'm, I'm cutting it down just a bit.
On station.
Um. Uh, this is a project that is, um, has been on the minds of the council for, for a while.
Long time.
Uh, with the opening of the, um, town center, um, when the desire to increase, uh, and improve pedestrian access to the town center, uh, particularly from the north side of town. Um, there's been a desire to improve the, uh, the intersection for pedestrian activity. And so in the plans, we have, uh, a variety of, uh, improvements that, uh, we are doing. First is extending the sidewalk, uh, from the entry to the Loiden Park neighborhood. Uh, there at Loiden Drive up and around the corner, and providing in what we'll call a raised crosswalk, uh, from, uh, the north side of the street over towards the station building. And so that elevated crosswalk will, um, provide a little bit of a speed table for vehicles that are driving up, slowing them down. Um, we're install, proposing to install rapid flashing beacons that are pedestrian activated such that, uh, it will alert drivers to pedestrians that are intending to cross the street. Um, also included are, is a solar street light to improve visibility at night as well as, uh, required, um, stormwater treatment, uh, facilities in the, um, what is now a weeded area. So it'll improve, uh, the landscaping in that area as well.
Okay.
Um, and so with that, we do have one additive alternate that has been included in the package that we will have a choice on awarding, uh, or not. And that is, right now, there is a little bit of sidewalk on the, um, approach from the east and a gap between that and the Loiden gate on the east side of Loiden Drive. And so what we would, what we have is, uh, pricing for basically putting in that missing gap of sidewalk to tie that in. The other item I did want to mention is that when, when we're doing the design of this project, we did have a desire to put in a stop sign on the westbound approach on the east side of the tracks. And so if you're coming up from Middlefield, we were hoping to be able to put in a stop sign. Uh, we have three stop signs already, one as you're going westbound towards the tracks, one coming out of the parking lot here at Station Lane, and another one at Loiden Drive. But if you're going westbound on Fair Oaks, you're just going through. And so we were hoping to provide, put in a stop sign there to slow down traffic and improve that pedestrian access. But the, uh, CPUC basically said no.
No.
And so we weren't able to include that in the project.
Right, right.
Um, and so with that, I'm available to answer any questions with regards to the project design.
I think Councilmember Degoya.
So the ad alternate, uh, is that the, on the side of Loiden Drive toward the railroad tracks?
It's adjacent, it's adjacent to the track side, yes.
It's adjacent to the track. So that, that's shown on the diagram in the same coloring as the sidewalk that goes.
Yeah, so the Vice Mayor is highlighting that. That's the additive alternate.
Okay, so my next question is, where that starts, the Vice Mayor was showing, it looks like there's a crosswalk. Is that right?
Um, there's a ramp there currently.
So that, that, I mean, if you're going to have a sidewalk on that side of the street, I think we need to have a crosswalk that people could use.
We're, we're talking about these little delineators here?
Uh, the, those look like they're little bumpy things.
They're not there there now.
They're not there now. It's not a crosswalk. It's a curb cut that drops down. But what you're saying is between those two, there should be a crosswalk.
Yes, that is what I'm.
That's exactly what I said.
It, it, it is a cross, it will be a crossing.
Okay.
Um, we were debating whether or not it should be a marked crossing.
Well, I think it should be marked so that somebody can safely cross.
But there's no stop sign.
There doesn't need to be a stop sign. There's a stop sign after it before you come to, uh.
Well, you have, I'm going to say you have the cars that are coming westbound that can just swing and turn right.
That's true.
Uh, and so what we are concerned about is, um, the perception of safety. People can cross like they can at any unmarked crossing. But we don't want to give a false sense of security by having the stripes on the ground.
What if there were little lights in the?
If that's something that the council desires, it's a not, it would be a nominal add to the project. And we can incorporate that after we award the contract, or we can, um.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but this was the same discussion we had about Stockbridge at. There isn't a crosswalk there, and we had all kinds of pedestrians wanting to cross there and not getting safe. And they ended up putting flags and, and pots on either side of the road, which without a crosswalk, I don't think.
Well, with, with a marked crosswalk, um, mid-block, which this sort of technically wouldn't be, it's still that false sense of security without some sort of either impavement flashing or pedestrian flash.
So the, the other thing, if I recall correctly, I have the, I'll take a look at the plans. But I think that that is actually behind the stop signs. And so that's where it would be a little awkward to put in a striped crosswalk before a stop sign.
Well, if we're thinking that people are going to cross over there, and we're putting little bumps and delineators on either side and a curb cut, which invites people to go in and bicycles to go down, there should be some markings.
I think it does the same thing.
Yeah.
I, if you're worried about a crosswalk inviting people to cross, you have the little bumps there. That's telling me as a pedestrian that this is the place to cross.
So.
So.
Yeah.
I don't see how that.
I wonder why we didn't maybe move this stop sign back here and then put another crosswalk here.
Well, if we move this stop sign back, they're going to, it's too far back from the intersection.
Um, oh. Really?
So.
This is pretty difficult.
Take a look at it.
I, I'm comfortable with staff looking at that issue.
So, uh, Councilmember.
Yeah, um, doing the add-on across the street requiring a stop sign, wouldn't that stop sign the, which side of the tracks?
It's on our side.
The one that we were hoping to put in?
Yeah.
Would have been on the opposite side of the tracks.
Yeah.
The westbound lane.
Mount Vernon side.
Somebody doesn't push the button and starts walking across, and somebody would have to stop. And then it's, it would be inviting to people to walk across there. And then people would have to stop, and stopping on the tracks is not exactly an advice.
We don't want anybody to stop on the.
Yeah, I know, but if you're going to have pedestrians know that they can cross there, they may just step out because that's what oftentimes people do. Not everybody pushes the button.
Yeah.
Okay? And so I think that we should discourage people from going that way to cross over Loiden Drive and then cross over properly where they have a little bit more room. So we don't have any issues with regards to, uh, cars being on or near the tracks when the train comes by. That's my two cents. I'm not in favor of that alternative.
With respect to that, um, sidewalk on the opposite side, Robert, are there any pavement markings and signage that can be added to help, beyond just the crosswalk at that location? We could add other, um, pedestrian signage.
Caution you not cross.
Signage, we can, we can look at other things that might assist.
In, inexpensive adds to the, to the project if the ad alternate is accepted.
Well, I like what you've done on, um, on the Fair Oaks side because this whole thing is kind of raised, right? This crosshatch, we don't like.
Yes, well, the center part is elevated.
Yeah.
And then you ramp up on the two sides.
Okay, yeah, it's a ramp and ramp, elevated ramp, right.
And, and that's where people are really using it. They're really using it.
Using the flat portion.
To go into the town center.
I, I think that if you look at the circulation improvements that have been completed in the park, the cross, the, the crossings that we have, the crossings have been elevated. Um, and so it's kind of a combination of a crossing and a
Yeah.
speed table where, uh, vehicles will be slowing down as they approach that crossing as well.
I understand. The, the problem is, we have many residents who live on Fair Oaks, uh, and on Mount Vernon Lane, and on McCormick. Well, the McCormick, McCormick people walk on their side and come up. But on the Mount Vernon side, they come over to the Colette's and to the library, to the town center. And they kind of don't have any place to cross. And so, uh, for them to come up Fair Oaks, over the tracks, and then take this nice little new path down a little bit to Fair Oak, on Loiden, and then cross over. Um, I guess Loiden is not that heavily trafficked, but still, I mean, you just, it's, uh, taking your life in your hands to cross the street.
We'll definitely get the, the pricing on the ad alternate. I think you also have some public comment.
Yes, okay. Are we finished? Wait, I want to give, uh, Mayor, uh, her, her ideas on this. Did you have any comments or questions on this?
I just, I had questions actually on the green infrastructure that's going to be built. Is that solving any existing, um, flooding problems that we have there? And it's coming out of our green infrastructure budget, or is it just something that is required that we have to build?
Um, I'm going to say it's, it's, there's not much of a flooding problem during regular rain events. But, uh, water does kind of pond a little bit on the side. It is giving an avenue for that water to be collected and, uh, brought into that area. Um, we do have an aspect of stormwater treatment that we do need to include. But it also is, uh, the new landscaping is also an enh- is, the new landscaping is also an enhancement to that corner.
So it would kind of look like what we have in front of our town center.
Similar.
That kind of landscaping, right? The bio swell and the, and the plants.
Is it a bio swell we're talking about? What is it we're, we're doing there?
Yeah, so we have a bio swell. So there's a vegetated swell that brings water into the bio swell, so it's, as the Vice Mayor said, it's similar. So if you look at page C2, it kind of shows where that basin is.
Like, like here, all this down here.
I know.
Yeah, you know.
With George.
Good, 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 okay. So, eh, at this time, close questions and open it up to the public for public comments on this item.
Walter Robinson, you should be able to unmute.
I think I am, thank you. So as many of you know, I'm a longtime resident of Lloyd and Park. I've probably made that crossing a thousand times. And it has gotten worse for two reasons. One, when we're redoing the train station, there's a lot of, of material put up that prevents you from looking. The biggest danger on this is coming from the town center across to Lloyd and because the way the road curves, you can see almost nothing if, until you get right out in the street. And as you know, the stop sign doesn't work that way, so people are coming from east to west, can come as fast as they want, and there's nothing to stop them. And so it's actually extraordinarily dangerous, particularly to people that aren't particularly agile. And of course, with the town center, the library, and this is not just Lloyd and Park residents. I mean, I met the police chief who was walking at Lloyd and Park, who obviously had to cross there. I mean, there's a lot of people that do that. It's awkward to, on your point about extending the sidewalk from the west side coming off Lloyd and Park. There's no sidewalk whatsoever for about twenty feet at least. That's the area that was referred to by staff as going to do something with it, but the something wasn't very clear. On the other side, where the proposal is to set the sidewalk, that's on the east side. And to do that, you're essentially either walking the road on Lloyd and Park to get out to that intersection. Which, as you say, I mean, people can do, but you're out in the road having come off one of these wonderful sidewalks that you're familiar with. So anyway, I think the, it's, the danger is greater as we put up all that stuff around the around the train station, which masks the view even more than it was before. So I think it's a very dangerous situation. The councils, I recall, approved this plan a couple of years ago. And so it's up again, but it has been a long time, so I, I am very much hoping that we can move this forward. And I do agree with the plan. I think it's a wonderful plan because of the safety factors there. There's no way you can move that stop sign any further west. It's right at the intersection and it would not help because the crosswalk has to be from Lloyd and directly across, essentially pointed towards the train station or slightly to the west. Anyway, that's my comment. I'm happy to discuss it with anybody that would like to because as Robert knows, I've watched this fairly carefully. Thanks.
Thank you, Walter. Thank you so much. I, I think that one of your concerns is going to be solved once the train station, historic train station has been come, remodel has been completed and hopefully that's going to be maybe this spring, so it's not gonna be much longer. So I think we're, I, I think we're making the right forward motion on this. I think there's still some issues that we need to discuss and solve. And whether or not we build that other sidewalk on the east side of Lloyd and going from the train tracks and the delineators at that Lloyd and Crossing. I don't, I don't know. I think everything else looks really good to me. The new sidewalk along the west side of Lloyd and going towards Fair, Fair Oaks and the new ramped crossing is, is, is good. I like that a lot, so. Mayor.
I have a comment.
Mr. Widmer.
Okay, so, as I said, I really don't support the east side crossing. I think it's a safety hazard with regards to cars.
I'm not exactly sure which, what you're talking about.
The east side is this side towards the train tracks.
Yeah, different. That's what I said.
Yeah, the amendment. I'm not in favor of that. I am in favor a hundred percent of the one on the west side.
Yep.
Side.
Absolutely.
I think that that's well needed. I think that if people are concerned that, oh, well, people might be willing to cross, just put up a sign that says you must cross here, just like you see in downtown areas where they're working on, on the sidewalks. I don't think that that's a big inconvenience for anybody to walk the twelve feet across the road, which is about the length or might, might even be fifteen feet, the diameter of that, that roadway.
Which roadway are you talking about, please?
Lloyd and.
This one right here?
Lloyd and, yeah.
That one, okay.
So I'm not in favor of the amendment, but I am in favor of the, the, the other project, the, the primary project. I think it's well needed. I think it will enhance the, not only the civic center and the Lloyd and area, but the safety of our residents coming from Lloyd and Park and going to Lloyd and Park.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember DeGoya.
Well, just a question. Right now, is it true that there are sidewalks on either side of Lloyd and Drive that go up to these little bumpy things?
The sidewalk right now goes up to the entry gate.
Up to where?
The entry pillars.
Okay.
And I believe that the ramps there are behind the entry pillars.
So will there be a portion on, is that on the west side?
I, I think that the depression is already there. It just doesn't have the bumpy, it doesn't have the
Delineator.
truncated domes on it.
Yeah.
So tho- those ramps.
But, but the sidewalk that we're gonna build from the new crosswalk all the way along the west side, that's gonna connect to an existing sidewalk, right?
Connect to the existing sidewalk.
That's what's important.
Yes.
And, and I think that's the most important thing.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a strong opinion about the sidewalk on the other side.
You know, a, a lot of people probably would like that just because it would be, but there's no sidewalk on the other side of the train tracks, you know, on the Fair Oaks side on that.
To Mount Eden.
To Mount, Mount Vernon.
Mount Vernon.
Yeah.
Right, Mount Vernon.
So, okay, uh, city manager wants to say something.
Just, Robert, you said that the sidewalk on the west side goes up to the pillars, when I'm looking on Google Maps now and that's where it ends. Across from that sidewalk, where it ends at the pillars on the east side, there is the
The depression.
The depression.
There is a ramp there.
There is a ramp that exists already, so that east side depression area already exists.
Okay.
It's the sidewalk connector that goes from there around to the railroad tracks that doesn't.
That probably would be a good thing to do.
It's already encouraging people to
Yeah.
Cross it that way.
Yeah, and, and that's been there and that's on the inside of those pillars.
Yes.
So I, I know we've closed public comment, but John Mulruff lives right next to this, and I'd really like to hear his opinion on it.
Good. John, you're just too timid. Yes, yes, please.
She actually didn't close public comment, we just moved on.
You jumped in.
You did. You did.
Come on, John.
I have probably crossed that intersection. More than anybody in this room.
Probably.
Including Walt Robinson. And my view is if you're crossing Fair Oaks Lane on the east side, whether you're going from Lloyd and Park toward the station or from the station toward Lloyd and Park, it's not so bad. You can see pretty well in both directions. If you're on the west side, if you're going from Lloyd and Park to the town hall, it's not so bad. If you're on the town hall side moving into Lloyd and Park, you cannot see what's coming at you down Fair Oaks Lane because of that little S-turn across the tracks.
Right.
And so I was disappointed that they wouldn't let you put up a stop sign. I think that would help a lot.
Well, but we are putting up pedestrian initiated flashing lights. That's gonna be, it's not a stop sign, but it's gonna let people know if someone's there for sure.
You're talking about two different areas.
No, I'm, I'm, that, that's on the east side.
Oh, you're talking about a stop sign on the east side?
I thought you were. I thought the flashing lights were on.
Who's on first? We don't have our map or not, we don't have our visual.
We, we can pull it up on the screen if you, if you.
But aren't the flashing lights right here?
No, they're
So, so what Mr. Malbec is saying is staff had, as indicated when I was giving the presentation, staff had requested consideration by the CPUC to install the stop sign on the approach as you're coming towards crossing from Middlefield.
Right.
And to Mr. Malbec's point, it's because pedestrians can't see those vehicles. Those vehicles don't slow down currently. The rapid flashing beacons are certainly gonna alert those drivers. And after they get experience with the raised crossing, they'll have a tendency to slow down because they're gonna be driving over that hump. And so though we don't have the ability to put in the stop sign, we do expect that they will be slowing down compared to where they are today.
So if I'm, I'm sorry, I'm croaky for some reason, I don't understand. If I'm coming from here, from the town hall, crossing Fair Oaks Lane on the, on the west side, is there a button I can push to activate those lights?
So you are, you are, there's gonna be a button on both sides of the crosswalk. So you will hit the button and it'll strobe both directions for approaching traffic to see.
Okay, so it'll
So I, I don't know if you're from
Push a button on the west side and it will warn
Okay.
Coming from the east.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that, that, that flashing light will be at the crosswalk, is that correct?
Yeah, so I'm gonna refer to a couple others that we have in town.
Yeah.
Most recent, the most recent installation is one at Glenwood. The rapid flashing beacons at Glenwood and Middlefield. And so there's a push button on both sides of the crossing. You tap it, it communicates with the other side. Both sides will flash in both directions.
And we have that on Valparaiso.
We have it on Valparaiso as well at the, at the school.
And it worked well.
University.
They work very well.
You have it at Glenwood, like at the Linden Gates?
Yeah, at the Linden Gate.
The Linden Gate. Okay, good.
I think that's almost as good as a stop sign. I mean, I think that's, it doesn't stop the cars necessarily, but
But it certainly alerts them.
Gives notice.
Yeah.
But there is a stop.
And I've, I've looked at the one at Valparaiso because it's been there a long time.
Yeah.
It's worked well.
So where are we?
Do, is this direction?
Got a motion to approve the plans inspection authorized bid.
I make the motion.
I'll second the motion. So we have a first and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember DeGoya?
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer?
Are we approving the alternate as well?
And the, the bid set will include the alternate, but it has to come back to you to actually approve whether or not we want to do it. But getting a price on it, it's already in the plans.
I think, I think we should.
I'll go along with it, but when it comes back, I, I don't, I don't agree with the one on the east side.
Well, okay, all right. And then I will vote yes and then we'll ask the mayor?
Yes.
So, it's unanimous. Okay, so moving on, we have one more item, which is our approval of funding for the installation of the electric vehicle charging infrastructure at Holbert Palmer Park through the Peninsula Clean Energy's EV Ready Program.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and Council. Rachel was out sick this evening, so you got me. So there were some clarifying questions about the process of solicitation and bids received prior to the bid, and the current project is for four level two ports at the entry lot and four level four port, or level two ports at the pavilion. That's what was approved by the council last year or something. The initial project estimate with the associated rebates from Peninsula Clean Energy reflected an estimated town cost of about sixty thousand at the time. At the time the project went to bid, however, the costs came in far higher. So it's unknown if the market costs have relaxed some now. But if the council wishes to proceed with the project as it's designed, it's recommended that you amend the budget up to as much as three hundred thousand dollars. Actual costs may be less based on bid or availability of other grant options via some particular bidding vendors. Alternatively, the council can direct a lower budget and a smaller project such as, you know, just do the entry lot now, or just do the pavilion now, or just do two level two ports at each location. Lastly, the council could elect to put the project on hold entirely and wait out the timeline. It's liable to get more expensive rather than less, unless there are more grants out there. And for clarity, the prior bids are no longer valid bids. We're not, those have all been rejected. So as the staff report notes, once a modified budget or funding is approved, staff will conduct a formal competitive procurement procedure, including coming back to the council for ultimate award and execute a contract once a vendor is selected. So tonight, the council can provide some additional input into the project, such as, you know, the number of chargers, types of chargers, preferred project, project financial design, in other words, if you want it to be if you would, much like we did the RFP for the park, you had, we're open to optional project design, so it could be a net zero kind of situation where we've got a procurement vendor out there who gives us a grant and we're not actually spending any money because they own the charging stations instead of the town, financial partnerships or solar carports. You could make some suggestions either way and we would design the formal bid based on those. That could either increase or decrease the actual estimated cost. In any case, without a revised budget, we can't move forward as designed right now and we won't know the final, final cost until we complete a bidding process. We'll, we'll, we will use the resources and networks of PCE as much as possible as they have the connections to the EV charging community more so than the town does. So that concludes us there, everyone.
Thank you very much. Bring it to council for any questions for staff on this item. Go ahead.
So, just a question. So I'm looking at the staff report and the table under the analysis shows that the original bid estimates from PCE were a total of fifty-four thousand dollars for eight level two ports.
Are you, you're on page two of three of the staff report?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I assume that once we got those, I, I just don't recall what we did. Did we then go out to bid?
Yes.
And what came back to us was in fact that the cost, rather than being forty-four thousand, fifty thousand dollars respectively, would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each.
Roughly, yes.
That's what came back to us.
Yes.
Okay, so we approved going forward to put eight of these charging ports into the park, but at a cost that was, turned out not to be realistic.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Widmer?
Yeah, when we came up with the original suggestion of allocating sixty thousand dollars, what detail did we get before we came up with that number, or was it just a finger in the air?
It was using the experts in the room, PCE to, at the market at the time, what those things were coming in at.
That, that, which, which reflected the chart above, and so we rounded up from fifty-four.
How could they have gotten it so wrong? Have you questioned them on that?
Well, one of the issues, and it's in the staff report as to why they could have been different is you know, they, that they, PCE may have used a cheaper alternative than ChargePoint for level two. We prefer ChargePoint, that's what we have here at the town center, and there are some complexities involved if the town has multiple types of charging networks. It requires the, the user to have three or four different types of charging apps on their phone in order to in order to figure out which one they're going to use. So we set a preferred ChargePoint solution and that may have been more expensive.
How much were the ChargePoints that we've installed outside this building?
Uh, don't recall. They were part of the actual project design, so I don't have that number in front of me. Sorry.
This just is.
My recollection is they were estimated at eight thousand dollars each.
Yeah, somewhere around there, eight to fifty.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Why would we talk about escalation? Who is this PCE guy?
How can they be trusted? Um, Mayor Hawkins, then, Marlene, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'd like to understand the business model because what I understand, there are some companies that install the equipment in the city, which just provides the land. And because we just provide the land, we don't do a profit share. Are these, are these companies that are going to get a profit share? So from my understanding, there's two different business models and I'm not sure we looked at both types of vendors. Is that correct?
I believe we looked at purchasing the station so the town would own the stations. I think what you're talking about is we don't own them. We just provide the land for them to put in the stations and the, the vendor owns the station and operates the station. So there is different kinds of models and we can certainly revise an RFP when we go out to provide that as an option and ensure that vendors of that type are solicited. And if they choose to respond, then we have that option. If they don't, then we don't.
Is this something that we could hand to our new sustainability person to perform a study just to understand what is better for the city? Because it seems that since we don't want to generate profit from it, that we would benefit from having someone else run the thing entirely. And to this end, it, for example, Teslas, we have the highest density of Teslas in the country. So maybe they would put a supercharger in for, you know, no fee at all to us. I don't know if they will, but it's something that we could research. And I'm also in favor of the idea of looking at more sustainable models that have batteries associated and uh, carports over them that generate solar as well. So, um, and there may be some new versions of that available now. So I'd like to see us have our sustainability person, our new one that we're going to get, look at, report back.
Okay. I would, I have a question. Who pays for the electricity and where does the electricity come from?
Much like our stations here, we do, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have a charge. We have plant, we have existing meters where these would be tied into. So for example, at the entry lot, we have the old meter cabinet from when we had the trailers. And so that's where power would come from for that lot. And then for the pavilion, the power would come from the meter bank next to the preschool.
Mm-hmm. Just to follow up on that, the mayor is talking about maybe a supercharger, you know, I, I, I would, I would think that that requires superpower.
Yeah.
Don't know.
Yeah.
Does.
I don't think we should do that.
Uh, no, but I mean, it does. It requires, you know, superpower.
No, I agree with you.
And, you know, so with Tesla and the amount of usage and the amount of people, you know, charging and, you know, plugging it in for a vendor like ChargePoint, I don't think they'd make any money.
So I, I, I think there's, what, what the mayor is proposing, I think is a, is a divergent path. One is to, is to do, instead of an RFP with options out there saying, hey, you can do these things. In the interim, do a separate analysis of what might be the best solution in the park and why and what's recommended, either by, with the assistance of PCE or with the assistance of staff. Staff is not the expert in the room by any means on these things. We have to get up speed on it. So I prefer we use someone like PCE to assist us with that.
Okay.
What is the current, what is the current split right now? If someone goes to our charge ports and we get, and they get charged, do we cover any portion of that or just the ones that we have for our, our employees? Uh, is it, is it a straight hand through? Does, who, who makes a profit in this?
Um, I'm going to say we tried to structure it that we, that there's really not any profit. So we don't make any money. Uh, the way that it is, is that charge, we pay a subscription to ChargePoint to operate the, the system and for warranty and service and that kind of thing. And then we all, they get a small percentage of the transactional revenue basically to cover processing fees and that kind of thing for the transactions. I believe it's somewhere around ten or fifteen percent uh, that they get on the transaction. And, but we set the rates. And so, for example, we have three rates that are available. One for the general public, one for um, employees, which is half of the general public rate. And then a.
It's free for council members, right? Free.
Uh, a holding rate for town vehicles because we anticipate that we're going to have town vehicles and that rate is going to be zero.
Do, on the case of the ones like, at the Selby Lane School, they have a carport design that is got solar panels over it. Do we know what percentage of the solar panels are covering of the electricity? Are they self-sufficient or fifty percent or twenty percent? Do we have any idea how those designs work versus plugging it into our grid?
If I, Diana, um, Mayor Hawkins, I think that uh, those are really wonderful questions for discussion. So I think th- this topic really needs to be discussed. Um, maybe not in a council member meeting, but you know, in a working study session or um, a subcommittee, just to kind of flush it all out. These are really great ideas, but I think that.
Well, I, I think, I don't think we necessarily need a subcommittee. I, I think if you want to direct staff to investigate further the various types of options
Yeah.
that we've heard come up this evening, we can engage PCE and have that done and then return that to the council.
And we can send you more ideas, right?
That's right.
We can send you more ideas. That's what I, oh, wait a minute. Councilmember DeGoya.
Uh, we have four charging stations here at the town center. We have none in the park. Have you had demand for charging stations in the park?
I'm aware of a few questions, but in terms of demand, I don't think so.
Yeah, that was, yeah, one of my questions in our one-on-one was, you know.
It's, it's one of those, if you build it, they will use it, but.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's different from, I'm just asking whether you receive demand.
That's right.
And who would be using it? So those are all their questions. So I, um. Oh, thank you. We're going to close the council comments and open it up to the public.
Council questions.
Council questions. I'm a little rusty. We're going to close. Uh, come on up, uh, please for comments. Carol.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Three hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, I found out about this because another Atherton resident sent me an email a few days ago, said that I know about it. So I went to a party two nights ago of Atherton residents and there were about thirty families there. I started asking what they thought about it. Not much.
About EV, EV chargers, yeah.
The chargers, yeah.
I agree.
These are our tax dollars.
Well, we haven't approved this.
Dollars, if, if you do this or anything like it. Well, I don't think it's such a laughing matter, Elizabeth.
No, but.
So where would we spend three hundred thousand dollars? Maybe reserve fund for Gilmore House. We're going to have to have multi-family housing for HCD. Maybe a few more police cars with the robberies. Maybe another policeman, maybe the daycare in Holbert Palmer that needs repairs. To your point, Rick, who wants this? Where's the demand? I come to the library several times a week. I bring my granddaughter over. Rarely do I see a car. I've never seen a car charging. I have seen a car in the parking places not charging. I guess one time I've seen a car charging. Why? Because if you're an Atherton resident, you have chargers in your garage. If you have an, an electric vehicle car. But every time I come over to an event and there are no parking places, I am livid over those four that are designated for electric chargers and aren't being used. So now you want to put them in Holbert Palmer Park as well, where we also have a lack of parking when we have big major events? I think we're trying to solve something that isn't an issue, that isn't a need. Atherton residents, they're paying the bill for whatever it is, if it's ten thousand dollars, have chargers. And I don't think we should have to support the outside community um, just to look green. By the way, as far as the sustainability person, after the robberies, I'd rather have another police. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Any other member of the public? Ken, come on up.
Ken Frederick in Lindenwood. Good weather got me here in person. So the thing I said you written writing, you can ignore if you happen already.
Yes.
Um, as an, as an environmentalist, I applaud what you're doing. I think trying to get less diesel fuel gasoline use is great. Uh, and you guys understand it more than others because you're on the board of PCE. So you've got that inside information. Uh, but this rises to two problems from my point of view. Uh, one is, as Carol said earlier, there are lots of other priorities for Holbert Palmer Park. And as we start doing this, the customer survey, the part, the, the, the resident survey, we're going to find more. Uh, between, I sat and I go to the park, parking rec meetings. I hear about the problems with bathrooms. I hear about all the money that's going to cost. I hear about our goals for the pickleball, everything else. There's lots of things out there. Pavilions, they need work. We've got all these kinds of things coming on the bike. The, I think the council has to put things at priority. More importantly though, is the second comment that she made, and that is, what is the problem we're trying to solve? You never go and create a project and spend money unless you can define the problem you're trying to solve. I can't define that problem. I have no idea what problem we're trying to solve. If you live in Atherton and have like a car, you're within a mile and a half, two miles of your charger. You don't need range to get there. So we're not providing these to our Atherton residents. If you go to Holbert Palmer Park, the only guy using them are going to be people with outsiders coming in to use them. Why, why would we spend our money, our tax dollars to do that? Uh, even when you come here, I'd like to see the facts on how many of these chargers are used daily as, as, as Carol is. I come here a lot. I see cars here a lot, same thing, not, not, not used. But I have no idea of all the hours that are possible. How many hours are they used? So I think what we're trying to do is solve a problem that is not a problem. And we should definitely put it on hold until we get the results back from our customer survey and find out what our customers, i.e. the taxpayers, want. They're in charge. So we need to find what they want and make that the priority. That's the important thing to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Any other member of the public have a comment on this? Anybody online? Okay, uh, I'll bring it back to council for comments.
Okay, um, I'm not in favor of making a budget amendment for three hundred thousand dollars. I don't believe that we need to invest not even more with putting solar panels up there and other generative devices. I, uh, yes, we may have more Teslas than any other community in America. Uh, not necessarily of our size, but um, but those people all have chargers in their homes or they should. And we put in our, our uh, the building permits that they have to have a type two charger. So I agree. I, I don't believe that we need to have this. I think it's uh, three hundred thousand dollars could be spent much better in other areas. I don't believe it's an issue. I know it can impact our climate action plan, but you know, we're responsible to the taxpayers. And uh, you know, sixty thousand dollars, I agreed, okay, it would be a nice thing to do to put those things in. Three hundred thousand dollars, I'm a no.
Thank you. Would you like to make a comment?
Uh, sure. Um, so I, we, we've talked about putting chargers in the park for more than two years.
Way more.
Uh, I, I mean, really quite a long time. Uh, initially, we were talking about putting two chargers near the main house or near the North Meadow parking lot and two chargers near the pavilion. Um, I, the part of the debate when we discussed that was are, are these needed? And who will they be used by? Um, I think that we decided at a reasonable cost, we would do that. And somehow that grew to eight chargers. I think partly because of a PCE program, but I'm not sure. Um, but honestly, I think eight chargers are unneeded in the park. Now, maybe at some point, they will be needed when things change, but I don't see that happening immediately. So I don't feel the need for that and I'm a hundred percent opposed to spending three hundred thousand dollars for it. That, if, if, if they were somewhere in the range of the eight thousand dollar per unit we paid here, um, putting four in would make all the sense in the world to me because I think it's good in a public space to have that. But at this cost, it makes no sense to me and uh, and, and frankly, I think there's going to be, as there is more pressure to uh, deploy electric vehicles, there's going to be a great deal more pressure to put charging stations in. And those charging stations are going to be supported by federal and state dollars because they're absolutely essential if you're going to have, if you're going to go beyond the six percent of automobiles that are EVs today. Uh, if you're going to increase that substantially, you have to have charging stations. So my vote would be to just wait and uh, see how this develops in the future and not feel pressed around it.
Thank you. Mayor Hawkins?
Um, I too agree with that. Uh, I think that we should wait. But I also think when we get the new sustainability person, it, it would be a nice project for them to figure out because I think that it's going to go the way where there will be people who will be willing to foot the bill to do it. And at that point, it makes sense since we don't have to make profit off it. So I think it's worthwhile to have someone research that and to keep up on the newer things as they come available that are more, more self-sustaining, where you're not spending all the money to underground the wires to go from existing electrical outlets. So I, I too would vote no for the three hundred thousand, but I do think we should put a research agenda on the new person's plate when they come.
Never, never give up.
Thank you.
Never give up.
I, um, honestly, when this item came before me and I looked at the packet and it just was like sticker shock, you know, because we have, as Councilmember DeGoya indicated, we've, we've talked about doing charging stations at the park for a long time. And it seemed like that when we approved the fifty-four thousand, sixty thousand dollars for the number that we have uh, listed, it was a reasonable amount. And um, just trying to uh, do something uh, positive for uh, the green infrastructure type stuff. Anyway, um, I am opposed to spending three hundred thousand. We would never agree to that. I think our town council is fiscally responsible and that was just such an outrageous increase in what we were expecting. So I think that um, at this point, we just need to uh, go back to the drawing board and cancel all that. Uh, why do we want charging stations at the park? Well, for um, all the reasons that we thought were good at the time uh, would be a public service uh, for people driving electric cars, coming to events, coming to um, uh, uh, do work and things. Um, but nowadays, everybody has so many uh, electric vehicles that have longer range than they did when we were first starting this. I mean, in twenty fifteen, you know, the Tesla that I got was only a hundred and eighty miles for a fully charged. Now they're up to, you know, three hundred miles and more for things. So we really don't need them at the park at this time. So I agree with my fellow colleagues that we need to close this out.
Right, thank you.
The direction I think would be to um, have staff continue or just take a, a closer look at um, alternatives and um, maybe through the um, sustainability coordinator.
Yeah, it'll be on the new analysts.
Our analyst, okay, great. Okay, so um, I understand that one of our residents, Carol, I'm so sorry you had uh, issues with your computer. Um, you know, we really felt that our technology was working. I'd like to, if at the um, uh, approval of my council members to reopen item number eight for public comments. Is that okay with the city manager and city attorney? Is that okay with the city manager and city attorney?
Taken the motion to approve it. You can reopen comments.
Reopen comments, yes. Correct. Mona, is that okay?
Yes, you may accept comment on that.
Okay, Carol, you have the floor. And I'm so sorry, you've got a cough. Well, and you know, something's in the air, you know.
So I'm running it through this. So Phil, you commented on the builders roundtable. I was there. I talked to Robert. You indicated there was no objection to the new master fee schedule. At the builders roundtable, there was. I was the objection. There were only two builders there. PPG and myself. I chose to talk to Robert privately afterwards, which I did. And what I said to Robert was, you know, as a finance person in the past, possibly a function of two things, the number of hours and the burden rate. I'm not going to dispute the burden rate because it's whatever you say it is. But I do dispute the number of hours that were used in a number of these calculations. So none of the builders that I know have a problem with the building section of the master fee schedule. Let's face it, it's passed along to your client. Builders aren't paying for it. I will because I build spec homes, but it's passed along and it's long overdue. Nobody has objection there. So I'm going to talk to you tonight as a resident. Where I object is the planning fees. I might go a little longer, a little bit, but I'll try to limit it. To your point, Rick, about the heritage trees, let me make a quick comment on that. So if I look at the assigned cost, because I did study the charts, the assigned cost, six thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. I took the average assistant planner rate, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And that says it would be twenty hours of direct cost and thirty of support cost. Does anybody believe that? No. To study a heritage tree, whether you should have a permit to take it down or not? Nobody in their right mind would believe that, sorry. Then on top of that, there's a cost for an appeal. If you lose that, the heritage tree, that has a cost of almost seven thousand. And the cost of the appeal is five thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. After you've already done the study for the original? Who in the world would believe that? No one. So this gets to my point. There's something wrong with the hours. I'm going to tell you a very quick story because I have a suggestion for you for Menlo Park. Week and a half ago, we had that storm on Sunday, a heritage oak split in half at my son's house and half came crashing through their new ADU. Fortunately, no one was in there because they'd be dead. So what Menlo Park did the next day, they issued an emergency tree removal permit. No cost, no arborist visit, nothing on the spot. Sent a photograph and that was it. And I think that Atherton needs something like that. I am aware of an Atherton resident last year that had a tree come through the builder's house. So I asked you to consider something like that. Going on, you talked about TPZ earlier. The number of hours that are included in the calculation of direct and support cost for TPZ is eighteen hours. I have three that I filed for. Sally was on my site, a half hour. A half hour. So I give an extra half hour to come and to go. That's an hour and a half, not eighteen hours. My last comment, at some point, our taxes surely pay for some of the indirect support cost. Where's that figured in? Because on some of these items, your support cost is twenty-five percent higher than direct. Really? So I think planning should be looked at again. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
You come back.
Thank you, Carol. And I just want to say that the analysis by Mr. Goody, what's his name? Eddie?
Capital County Partner.
Capital County Partners, yes. Goes into a lot of that detail.
Yeah, I believe that's the study she was referring to.
Were you looking at that study? Okay, I thought she was doing a, a calculation of, you know, okay, so. Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Any other mo- meet, business to discuss? Other than that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your report.
You're welcome.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, Mona, thank you.